Now then, call to order special meeting of council on the November the 2nd, 2020. Purpose of the special meeting of council is to have a hearing of objections and I will turn that over to the public or anyone who has the hearing of objections. Mr. Knopper, could you just fill in the blanks there for the hearing of objections, please? Just to let the public.
Get the call approval and stuff?
I have the agenda, but that's not on it. So obviously, I didn't get the whole thing. Sorry, folks. Thank you, Paul. All right. My apologies to the public, but the here public hearing of objections and this public hearing of objections is for the BIA bylaw and the so we will go forward to the recording of attendance. I note that all members of council are in attendance with the exception of Councillor Bishop and who's not able to be with us this evening. And I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as written, please. Councillor Gru, thank you. And the secondar, Deputy Mayor Henderson, thank you very much. All in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, hearing none. The agenda is approved. And I will read the hearing of objections. The Council of the Town of St. Andrews is holding a public meeting tonight to hear objections to the proposed bylaw 20-07, a bylaw of the Town of St. Andrews to impose a special business area improvement levy for 2021. Is there anyone, no one in the audience, I don't think, to speak to this? Mr. Knopper, do we have any written submissions in advance of this?
Through your worship, no, we do not have any written submissions to the hearing of objections for bylaw 2007, the bylaw for the Town of St. Andrews to impose the special business area improvement levy for 2021.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Knopper. Anyone following us, Mr. Knopper?
Through your worship, there's no question or objection.
Related? Okay, good. Well, it would appear that we have no one who has come forward to make any objection to that particular bylaw. So I understand now we will be moving into the next phase and in the next meeting, we will be considering that to be read for the third time. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Knopper. So on that basis, I'll look for a motion to adjourn, please. Councillor Gomisho, I think I saw your hand. And Councillor Akagi seconds that. All in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Seeing no nays, we are adjourned. Thank you, council. Order the regular council meeting of the Council of the Town of St. Andrews on Monday, November 2nd, 2020 at 7:00 PM at the W.C. O'Neill Arena. Recording of attendance, I note that all members of council are now in attendance for the regular meeting and I will look for a motion to approve the agenda as written. Councillor Gru, thank you. And the secondar, Councillor Bishop, thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda as written, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, hearing none. The agenda is approved. I will now move to disclosure of conflict of interest on the part of any member of council in relation to the agenda this evening.
I will be for PD.
1004. Okay. Councillor Harrison, thank you. I'll count on you to do that at the appropriate time. We're now moved to presentations. They've been patiently waiting here for some time for us to get going. And I would like to first introduce Caroline Davies, who is, I still believe, the chair of the Pasco-Macquadi Lodge and Leslie LeBlanc, who's the administrator of Pasco-Macquadi Lodge. Welcome tonight and we look forward to your exciting news.
Thank you, worship and council. I just wanted to add that I know you're all taking on an extra year of work and I know that the paycheck at the end of it's going to be tremendous. But as somebody who has had the opportunity to work with you on a number of projects, thank you. We're here again to talk about the renewal. We have continued to work on gathering our facts, looking at options as to what would work for us, what wouldn't work. And I guess I'm really here for two things. One is to update you and the other is to ask for a couple of decisions on your part. The first issue, of course, was the need. We have this building, which in its day was probably state of the art. It no longer is. There's your arrows. I need a Mac. We looked at this. We did a review of what it would cost to, or what it would take to do a renovation of the building to give us more space for our residents in terms of rooms. We have a 50-year-old facility. It's nearly 50 years old. The province does periodic reviews of the assets of the nursing homes across the province. We're about $3 million in arrears of rentals or improvements that need to be brought on and that's just basic maintenance. So there, you know, there's a delta there that needs to be fixed if we continue with this building. And we consulted with the province, with representatives from the Department of Social Development. We presented all that to them and they said, if you renovate your current facility, you'll still have a 50-year-old building at the end of it, plus a new part, and you'll probably still have a lot of issues. So why don't you build new? And it was like, perfect. So we've since then have been looking at what it would take to get a new facility for St. Andrews. We also looked at the results of the Age Friendly Community Initiative because that informed a lot of what we were doing at the lodge anyway. Things such as intergenerational activities, integrating the lodge and what we, the services it offers more into the community, maybe looking at having an adult day program or having a spa where people who are afraid to have a shower or bath in their own home can come and have a supervisor, use a supervised facility, looking at all those things. So that informed some of the information we were, we've been looking at. We also, as a board of directors, had done a strategic plan in 2018 and our, one of our top items there was to move to a 60 individual room with individual bathroom facilities so that each of our residents would have their own room. The, I don't, I'm sure most of you have been in and seen the rooms. The individual rooms we have now are small. If there are two or three pieces of equipment, you basically can't have a visitor in the room. The double rooms are small. Even if you converted those to single rooms, they're still smaller than the provincial standard for a single room. So this is what we were working toward. COVID-19 hit and it underscored the need for us to provide a nursing home that would provide effective infection control, whether it's COVID-19, norwalk, Legionnaires, doesn't matter. We need to be able to protect our residents and our staff from getting sick. We also wanted to make sure that we continue providing person-centered care where the needs of the residents and their family are, drive the services and the care that they give. And we wanted to have a pandemic, hopefully we won't have another pandemic, but responsive solution. We've looked at two models. The one on your left is the, what we'd call an institutional model, long corridors, rooms off the corridor, which is what our current facility is. And we looked at a household model. A household model would be something that would be centered around a living room. You'd have a dining room, a kitchen, and 12 to 15 individual bedrooms in that household. So they would be self-contained in that entity where if you did have some spread of a disease, you could shut down that, that household and not infect the other houses. You would have dedicated staff to that household so you wouldn't always be crossing one's household to another. You'd have your individual rooms and you would have a home-like environment where the meals would be served and prepared and served in that household. We also looked at creating, though these obviously are two-story buildings, we're not looking at a two-story building, but creating a feel of a neighborhood. So we wanted to have a commons in, around which the houses would be located and where people could gather, people could walk, we could have gardens. We could look at having outdoor barbecues or music, things that we do currently in our courtyard. So we settled in terms of what we would like to build is on a household design. We have engaged with an architectural firm called G Architects that have done a number of nursing homes, both in Nova Scotia, they're building a couple, working on a couple right now in Newfoundland, and they're doing several in Ontario. And they have been listening to our feedback. We've had fabulous input from the leadership team at the lodge in terms of what works for them. And we're getting hopefully our final concept. It's not the final building, but the final concept this week. We've spoken to various people within the community. We've to sure, ensure that we still are part of the community of St. Andrews. And like one of the organizations that we have talked with, and I'll talk a bit more about it, is the Pasco-Macquadi Early Childhood Education Center to see if we can do more with them. We do have them visiting the lodge now. We want to co-locate. So that's, we've also looked at bringing in training and development for the staff to do the transition to household design because it is, there will be a change. They'll still be providing the same level of care, but they won't be coming in and walking down the long corridor. They won't necessarily be working with this group of people every day. They'll be working with that group and only that group. So we have, we've been discussing with an organization called the Greenhouse Project, which is an American-based company. They have about 300 nursing home facilities across the states. I believe, and Leslie, correct me if I'm wrong, they had, with COVID, they had nine houses that had it. Nine out of, and the 300 are not 300 houses, they're 300 facilities. Each, some could have 10 houses, some could have 25, some could have six. So, you know, it's, it's been working for them in terms of dealing with COVID. They also have 15 or 20 years of experience in transitioning from an institutional model to a household model and are, have been very generous with their experience today to help us get our minds around how this would work and what works best for, for St. Andrews. So we've been talking to potential donors. We've talked to the government. We've talked to the National Association of Nursing Homes. We've spoken with you. We've spoken with Huntsman, we've talked to, in fact, I probably can make a shorter list of people we haven't talked to in terms of trying to get this going forward. So as I say, we've looked at an evidence-based pandemic responsive model. I believe this will work for us. I believe it'll work for New Brunswick as a forerunner model. I believe it'll work for Canada as a model. So, you know, I, this is part of what we were asking the provincial government to look at in terms of leading the way for where, how nursing, where nursing homes should go in this province. As I said, we opted for the household model. We have a design concept. It's probably subject to change because of course, money speaks and so we might have to tweak some things. Part of the design also includes a corridor that would attach all the houses to a central hub. So the central hub would be where you'd have your multi-purpose room. You'd have a central kitchen which would receive and do basic preparation of foods, which would then be, you know, heated up or cooked and served in the households. You would probably have, we'd look at maybe having room for community activities so people wouldn't have to go outdoors in bad weather or if, you know, they just were running quickly and didn't want to have to put on the boots and a hat and just in a coat. We've also looked at, as I say, bringing in the Pasco-Macquadi, I'm going to use the word daycare, sorry, I can never get the rest of it out, and have it as a household on the campus connected to the facility. So they would get a new home, which they sorely need. We would have the intergenerational aspect that we all need, all of us in our, every aspect of our life. And it would allow our residents and their families to see young kids out playing and have, they wouldn't have to be being walked or stroller down to the lodge, they could walk right in, you know, next door. So that's part of the design concept. We are working on MOUs with, we have one with the Pasco-Macquadi daycare. We're working on one with Huntsman. We have looked at a couple of pieces of land that would fit our design. If your land is long and narrow, it changes the design that we're currently looking at. We wouldn't be able to have a commons. We'd have to do more like a residential row of houses, which would not be my preference because I think we want to get that feeling of, of community for this residence. And we won't move further on this site until the province gives us the, a real okay. We have spoken with a number of organizations about repurposing, and we've spoken with you about repurposing their legacy home. Fort Worth Housing keeps coming to mind and there is a lot, a lot of interest in the community, which is great. So if we can just keep that going forward, because I think that satisfies another need that was highlighted in the age-friendly initiative. And we have briefed the staff at Social Development. Obviously, we need to determine which sites works best, both for the design and in terms of cost. We are going to start briefing politicians. I think that to get a decision on this, we are going to have to go probably to the executive council of the province. I do not believe it is something that a minister would want to take on their own decision of this nature. We are looking at the guesstimate of the cost and those of you who have been involved in construction projects before probably have a better idea than I do, but I would guess it's going to be around $25 million. So it is not something to do sort of not pay attention to. The province is also going to a new model of funding. In the past, they have funded the nursing homes. They have done the contracting for the design and development, building, and they basically pay all the bills. So if the roof's leaking, you go to the province and have them fix it. They are now changing that model and they are asking if you're going to build a nursing home, that you take on all that risk. So one of the reasons we're taking as long as we are to come up with the idea of what we want is we have to be sure that we know the square footage. We have to be sure we know, understand the staff implications because we have to be able to pay all the bills at the end of the day because we, there is no, there's nobody else going to come forward and give us money to fix the roof. So it's, it's sort of nice to be first out of the block on this, but it's also a little like, geez, it'd be nice if you had some experience in this. So once we have the approval, we'll be back. What we'd ask of council is that we could enter into a MOU on a first right of refusal on the site at the corner of Bar Road and Champlain. It is a good-sized piece of land. It's more than enough to fit the design that we, we'd like to build. I think, given that we went into a household design, it suits a residential area. So that's, it's an ask. As we get to a decision to move forward on land, we're obviously going to have to rezone. So that's just important. Doing that would be appreciated. We got a letter of support. I have expressed to a couple of you, I just want to make sure that we don't have to go back next May to a new council to ask for support before we can move forward again. I, I would like to make sure we have that firm, that when we go to the province, they understand. Criticism of new council, I just feel that we're, we've got long enough to work on this. We don't need to delay it again. And besides, I'm getting older. I might need one of those rooms sooner rather than later. It also like assistance. I believe the federal government is going to have some money out there that would be directed towards nursing homes. I don't know the process. I don't know how it's going, you know, but whatever assistance you can, or support you can give to help us get some of that money, because that'll probably make the difference between being able to get the facility I believe we need and a modified version of that facility. And obviously, we always come up with our handout, right? If there's any opportunity for other sources of financial contributions, that would be appreciated too. I know normally I don't get asked questions, but I am hoping that there are some questions and I'm happy, or Leslie's happy to answer them.
Carolyn, it's, look, this is something that, you're absolutely right. This council is well aware of your aspirations and your vision and, and what you want to do. You know, we do have land. We were kind of waiting for you to pick us, quite frankly, because I know you were shopping around. So we'll have to have another fulsome discussion of that and, and with council. But it just seems to me, I understand your last statement, that we feel that way too. I believe, or I can't speak for all of council, but we will have this discussion in council that, that we know enough about this project and we've lived through COVID with you. Therefore, we think we're in the better position to try to help you move this ahead, or at least I would hope that council would take that position. And you won't have to start all over again next May, sort of thing. And I, I get that. So we are trying to wind down, although we wouldn't know by looking at our agenda tonight. But we are getting some fatigue as well on council and the good thing is, is that we've all hung in there for the last year and almost a year and we're, we're going to hang until the end. But this is, in my view, one of those things that we need to act on in the next few months before we get stood down permanently and the new council takes over. So anyway, council, we don't really have much time for questions. Does anybody have a burning question that they want to ask Carolyn? Anybody? Okay?
Should I just say thank you? I know that this is a pile of work to get where you are today. It's not like this is an hour or two a week that you've been chipping away at. This has been a, a major development and I think, just to echo the mayor's comments, I think council from day one has been pretty consistent on this. Is anything we can do to help, we'd be happy to. So I think the next step would be maybe to sit down with town staff and talk about what some of these could look like. And I do agree that although I'm one to, to not lock in future councils, so let the next council make the decision. The reality is, is the election's in May, they'll first get together in June, they're not going to be ready to talk about this till September, October. So you're going to delay your whole project. By a year of this council can't work with town staff to get some solid things on the table. And I, I think your, your operating model is well thought out. I think it makes sense with today's world and just, I know there's a committee of people behind you supporting you. So thanks for all you do and we look forward to getting, seeing some draft documents of what that could look like, if I could speak for all of council, because I think it's something, if we're going to be an age-friendly community, I think it's something that's really attractive in this community is to have a state-of-the-art place that when you, you know, need that extra assistance, that you can go to and feel good about your family members going through too. So thanks again.
One thing I can't remember, if we've said or didn't say that we have a business consultant that we can work with. It's been very helpful.
Good. Well, thank you very much and you have our attention.
Very well.
I know that. And we look forward to it. Thank you very much. Okay. 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 Okay.[1706.08] And lots of those members are already are volunteers. So we're looking forward to getting more people on board and learning about nature and what we can do as, as citizens to help protect these places and to learn from one another about the importance of, of nature. One of the projects I just wanted to mention is Jesse Davies is one of our honorary directors. And Jesse asked council a little while ago now, I believe, to put up a sign for Navy Island at the wharf. So I just wanted to show you, she mentioned that the dimensions were needed and some more information about content. So this is an example of one of the signs that we have on a preserve with trails. It's small font, but just, it just talks about the general ecology of the preserve and the previous land, don't land owners and kind of what you can expect to see. So this is the, the sort of thing that we would normally have, but we're very open to having different branding if the, if the town would, has certain recommendations or any restrictions on that. We just want to be celebrating the Navy Island. It's a really special place for a lot of people and has been for many generations. And I know Freya found a cemetery there, but that was from the 1700s. She can tell you more about. So yeah, there's just little things that we'd, we'd love some input on. And we know it's an important place, both culturally and ecologically. So it would be nice to tell visitors about that when they get to the wharf. So just to touch on this before Freya talks more about the, the events we've done over the summer, our current nature preserve uses. So we have certain permitted activities and non-permitted activities that are just based on the Nature Trust's current bylaws. So permitted activities are education and research, hiking, maintenance of existing trails and posting of trail signs. Dog walking is allowed on our preserves with, with leashes and invasive species management. Like if there's any invasive plant species, the volunteers and staff will work to take those out, like things like Japanese knotweed that kind of take over areas will work to cut those back and replant with native plants. Because they, they do have a lot of damaging effects to the wildlife and wildlife viewing. So some non-permitted activities, we just would like to kind of just touch on our camping, campfires, hunting. So hunting is allowed on some preserves, but not others. And these, the ones where it's not allowed, that was the wish of the land donor. So those preserves are posted with red no-hunting disc. Disturbance to migratory birds, any ATV or snowmobile use, dumping of garbage, mountain biking and removal of native vegetation currently is not allowed. So this is, I just wanted to touch on these because we do have a few things that might affect the non-permitted activities that we've been trying to do, just to prevent erosion at Pagan Point, for example. We've been kind of blocking off an area to reestablish some trees that have been cut. So we're just kind of informing the council and, and folks listening about that. So Freya, you can take it over.
I wonder if I can just get it to. No, that's okay. There we go. Okay. So it's been another busy summer at the Pagan Point Nature Preserve and at all three of our nature preserves in and around New Brunswick. So the first preserve that we worked on this summer was the Pagan Point Preserve. So just a little background about it, it's a 30-acre piece of land that runs along the St. Andrews shoreline. The land was donated in 2005 by Donald Wellstead. And the, it protects a forested area and a salt marsh, as well as the ecosystems that that area encompasses. So this map shows the nature preserve in green and our trail system is the red dashed line. So our first event took place in June. We had a great group of volunteers who came out and helped us plant 100 trees in less than two hours. This was on a deforested area that runs along the salt marsh bank and has the Van Horn Trail on the other side. And the trees in this area will stabilize the salt marsh bank as they grow, which will help to preserve this special ecosystem. So these photos here kind of give an idea of the second area that we worked. We have a lot of trouble with erosion on this nature preserve. And we've also had some problems with campfires in the past. We don't allow fires on the land just due to their potential to get out of control and also due to some trouble that we've had in the past with some cutting or burning in the fire pits. So this is the second area that we worked in. You can see that there's some trouble with erosion. So the second spot that we worked on, we planted 30 trees, both native softwood and hardwood trees, and put up a temporary deer fence to protect the trees as they grow. And this will help to sort of mitigate some of the erosion issues that we have on that slope there running down to the beach. So this just kind of gives an idea of what the fence looks like. So the second preserve that we worked on this summer is the Coey Taylor Nature Preserve. And this is an area that's, it's a 600-acre preserve and it's located near Boca Bay. And it's special, it's classified as a class two protected area under the Protected Naturals Area Act. And that's mostly due to the fact that it encompasses two brackish ponds that are home to an assemblage of plant and animal species not found anywhere else on our coastline. So it's a very special place. So this map shows the Coey Taylor Preserve. And then our trail system is in red. And the area that we worked on this summer was the Taggart's Brook Loop, which is located on the same side of the road as the parking lot. So the trail, the, the day that we had on this preserve was a trail work day. And we cleared the Taggart's Brook Loop. Now that the trail is clear, more people will be able to enjoy the beautiful views there, which will allow them to connect better with New Brunswick nature. So the last preserve that we worked on this summer was the Navy Island Nature Preserve. This is a 49-acre preserve that's located across from St. Andrews in the Bay of Fundy. It's important habitat for migrating birds and it holds aesthetic, historic and ecological value. So this map shows the Navy Island Preserve in the Passamaquoddy Bay and it's in green and the trail is in red. So the first event that we had here was in September. We reestablished the two-kilometer trail around the boundary of our preserve and we had a beach cleanup. Also on this preserve, in October, we went over to look for a cemetery that we knew was there. I think it's been common knowledge in the town for a while that there's a cemetery over there, a loyalist cemetery. And there's some information that can be found at the archives about it. There's eight graves over there. They all belong to the Maloney family, as far as we can tell. It's a loyalist family that came to the region in 17-something, I'm not sure. And the graves are from about 1812 until 1855 or so. It's very interesting. If anybody knows anything more about the graves over there, we're looking for more information. It's really very interesting. We want to add to our, our management plan and give more information on the historic nature of the island. Okay, so join us in stewardship. The Nature Trust of New Brunswick is able to protect special places in the province with help from a whole lot of volunteers and stewards. If you're interested in learning more about the Nature Trust or getting in touch with us about becoming a volunteer, you can contact us by email or through our phone number, or you can check out our website, or follow us on social media.
Great, thank you, Freya. I just wanted to add one, one last thing. We are, we currently have a campaign out, sorry. It's hard to hear, probably. We currently have a campaign out called Conserve Your NB that some of you may have received in your mailbox. So we're currently protecting, we're, we're working toward protecting 15,000 acres of land by 2030. So that would be nearly doubling the amount of land that we have protected. And yeah, so we'll be working closely with our partners to identify those parcels of privately-owned land that could potentially be protected. So yeah, just wanted to let you know. Great. If anyone has any questions for us, we're happy to answer those. Yeah.
Counsel, does anyone have anything? Certainly, I would assume that we're working somewhere behind the scenes on that signage that we talked about. So I'll talk to staff about that. And I'm sure Paul or Chris know something about that. And that sounds like a worthwhile thing that we, we ought to help you with. So we'll, we'll, we'll talk a little. Deputy Mayor?
Well, for your presentation, there's actually a lot of things in that that I wasn't aware of, to be honest with you. So I'm really, I don't know about the rest of you, I didn't know a lot of that stuff took place. So I guess just two things is, I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for the town to be a better partner? Is there something that you can see us doing outside of helping with signage? Because I feel like you guys have done a lot of work and myself, at least as a, as a town councillor, haven't been promoting the great work that you have been doing. So a little bit, I'll put on myself on that as well. So anything we can do to help you. But yeah, just a big, huge thank you. And I wonder if, as you look to expand the amount of protected area you have, I know Minister Holland said after he was re-elected that he was looking to take about 23%, I believe, of the crown land is protected right now. And he's hoping to bring it to 30%, which should mean about 300,000 additional hectares. So I'm hoping that that could be an opportunity for you as well, as that's one of the things that he's promising. And hopefully it'll, it'll lead to an opportunity for you.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for mentioning that. And we're definitely open to, to further partnership with the town of St. Andrews. Yeah, if, working on signage would be really helpful and also just helping promote the Nature Trust to, to citizens if they're looking, looking for kind of volunteer work or trails to hike, that's, that's always helpful, helpful for us. And yeah, in terms of crown land, yes, we do work with the Department of Natural Resources on helping identify crown land that is significant with species at risk on it. And we actually, there's actually a piece, I'll show you on the Coey Taylor map that has, so this orange piece at the bottom you can see is a protected natural area. So that's crown land that is protected as well. So it's kind of, we, we work with them to create wildlife corridors and to hopefully protect parcels that are side by side so that, yeah, it creates a larger area for wildlife. So those sorts of things, we're, we're definitely talking. Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? Great, thank you. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Okay, can we? Okay, council, we'll, we'll get back together here. We'll now move to the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. And there are a number of them. So I will start with a look for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of October the 5th, 2020. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Yeah, thank you, Counselor Bishop, the secondor. Counselor Gru. If there aren't any questions, all in favor of approving those minutes as written, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Next, we move to the minutes of the special meeting of council on October the 7th, 2020. A motion, please, to approve those. Counselor Gru, thank you. And a secondor. Yeah, Counselor Harrison, thank you. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Now we will move to the minutes of the special meeting of council on October 21st, 2020. Motion, please, for that approval. Counselor Bishop, thank you. And a secondor. Counselor Akaji, thank you. If there aren't any questions, all in favor of approving the minutes of October 21st, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are also approved. Now we will move to the minutes of the special meeting of council on October 26th, 2020. A motion to that effect, please, from someone. Counselor Gru, thank you. And a secondor. Counselor Bishop. If there are no questions, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are also approved. Then I'll move to the minutes of the special meeting, or the committee of council, pardon me, on October 26th, 2020. A motion to approve the committee of council meeting minutes. Counselor Akaji, thank you. And a secondor. Counselor Bishop. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. And then finally, we'll move to the minutes of the special meeting of council of October the 28th, 2020. A motion to approve those minutes. Counselor Akaji, thank you. And a secondor, Counselor Gru. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are also approved. So we've now approved all the minutes of meetings, all seven of them for last month. I'll now move to the staff reports and I will ask Mr. Chris Spear, our CAO and treasurer, to provide his chief administrative officer's report.
Happy November to residents, council and other staff members of the town of St. Andrews. 2020 has seemed to go by extremely quickly despite the challenges of the pandemic. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the ongoing activities of the town of St. Andrews. Even though this council's had its term extended to May of next year, you're continuing to be productive and seeing your mandate through while some communities struggle to maintain even a quorum of council. The 2021 to 2025 budgets are, are completed. This past Wednesday, council was presented with the third draft and three new initiatives that recently came up. You debated those issues, provided clear directions to staff, and we hope to finalize the budget tonight. With the imposed deadline fast approaching by the province, provincial government, we have a motion before council tonight for approval. If council needs more time to review, we can hold a special meeting on next Monday for a final presentation and approval. The last municipal plan document to be debated and finalized by council is the zoning bylaw. We are holding another workshop-style meeting with council to go over a few items with you for your discussion and instructions to staff at the planners. We will then go to set up a meeting of objections for more public input, as well as get the opinion of PrAC, both required under the Community Planning Act, currently the zoning bylaws at first reading. One issue that council needs to come to a decision on is what constitutes appropriate deer fencing. Many residents are looking for more permanent solutions than the invisible mesh has originally planned by council. We have several citizens who want to set up seven high-foot fences, even in the front yard, while only three foot is allowed under our current regulations in the historical business district. Council's original hope was not to have a highly fenced-in community, but the prevalence of our deer in the town has brought us to our crossroads on how to proceed. On the agenda tonight is a bylaw for deliberation. The Business Improvement Area Tax Rate bylaw is set up annually as required under the provincial act. These funds are collected through the property tax system from businesses along Water Street, from Elizabeth the Princess Royal Streets, to be used for the beautification of the downtown, financially support events and to promote initiatives to attract shoppers to our retail district. It has been part of our governance for decades and supported by members of BIA. Council is also reviewing the following bylaws to come forward. The all-terrain vehicle bylaw is in response to concerns about the use of off-road vehicles for recreational purposes within St. Andrews. It was recommended by bylaw enforcement officials that we have our own bylaw in addition to the provincial act to aid compliance. Council is also considering a short-term rental bylaw to address concerns expressed by apartment dwellers and those in the tourism accommodation industry. Council wants to assure all those in tourism sector are being regulated similarly, that neighborhoods, neighborhoods maintain their peace and that we cease to lose dwellings for the college students and those employed in the service sector. Prior to 2020, it was a was a noticeable issue that is playing havoc with the medium to long-term housing market, as well as allowing essentially unregulated business within St. Andrews. As mentioned earlier, the town is being considered for two grants for the following: a $5 million project to reconstruct the seawall at Market Square, as well as rebuild the approach to the wharf and do necessary repairs, and then a $1.5 million project to create and upgrade active transportation infrastructure within the town. If successful, both applications provide 80% funding for these projects. Both are potentially once-in-a-generation opportunity that provides social, health, and economic benefits for the long term. Council will review each of these if successful and look for community input. Administrative. Staff have a lot of irons in the fire in addition to the business of council. The administrative and operational needs of the town seem to continuously grow, which requires due diligence, forward planning, and a proactive approach to meeting the needs of our citizens. I would like to congratulate Tim Sharkey in his retirement earlier in October. After spending the majority of his adult life working at the W.C. O'Neill Arena, he has determined it was time to hang up the zamboni key and focus his life in a different direction. On behalf of staff and council, I wish him well and good health as he spends more time with his grandchildren. I am happy to report by this meeting that the arena is in full operations. With COVID operational plans being needed for our facility, as well as for each user group, staff have been meeting and communicating regularly with all the volunteer groups to help them get ready to get on the ice. With the assistance of Public Works and the operations manager, we were able to get both ice surfaces installed and ready on time. Council has been invited to meet the director of the Huntsman Marine Science Center and to do a tour of the facility. They will be discussing their vision for the next few years. They are an important, longtime community partner that diversifies our economy and provides many high-paying jobs for St. Andrews. This is a great opportunity for council and staff to interact and become more aware of the organization. The mayor, CEO, and clerk will be attending via Zoom an annual meeting between the municipal police service agreement partners and the RCMP Assistant Superintendent of Division J in New Brunswick. This is an important time to hear the successes and challenges of the RCMP and to communicate the concerns of the municipalities they serve. With the ever-changing role of the police departments, especially in these times, these opportunities to share aid in keeping us focused on the needs of our community. With the summer over, bylaw enforcement has switched priorities from parking infractions to zoning issues, as well as properties that are deemed unsafe or unsightly. We have several active files we are working on. The process is arduous as there are several steps we need to follow to ensure compliance while allowing the landowners reasonable time to comply with the bylaws. We have had some success this year as we continue to press on with the files. Early in October, I had an opportunity to meet with the director of the St. Andrews Biological Station. We talked about their initiatives and challenges under the pandemic and their vision as well. Following under federal guidelines, they have been locked up tighter than most institutions within New Brunswick. Some staff are still mostly working from home, but they are starting to ramp up again. He, as well, would like to offer council a tour someday that is under the direction of the federal minister and expects that'll take some time yet. I'd like to congratulate the organizers of Indulge for successfully staging a modified event that brought foodies to the town and increased business for the eaters of St. Andrews. The community is trying very hard to repel Mr. Grinch this Christmas season. We are reviewing the mandatory orders and looking at ways to stage a different celebration this year. The pandemic may alter the past activities, but also give us an opportunity to reinvent our activities and try something new. Under Municipal Services, with the change in season, the leaf collection program has been ongoing but came to an end today. We'd ask any of those with bags to put them out with the Thursday garbage pickup. We are also on the last phase of the Decade of Street Lake Replacement Program in the downtown, and will install the final few this fall. The lake level has stabilized. We are hoping for lots of precipitation over the next several months. Our usage is down over the winter, but we'll have to watch this closely heading into the spring of 2021. In October, staff also performed semi-annual maintenance on the water and sewer lines. They were able to flush 117 sewer lines in five days, sped up by a great suggestion by the utility staff to increase the efficiency of the operation by refilling the flushing trucks through the hydrants. In the last week of October, we also performed flushing of the water remains to remove built-up silt that may have settled. The wharf roshrooms are now closed, with only the commercial users left. The closing of the wharf, as well as additional repairs, are being performed by Public Works staff as we prepare the facility for the winter. The fire department welcomes back Emily Ross, who has returned after a couple of years away at school. The 15 responses this month include another medical first response call, as the closest ambulance was in St. Stephen and asked for our aid. We are now aware of the provincial auditor Jenner's report, which verified what we already believed. Rural New Brunswick is underserved by ambulance in New Brunswick. The Service Commission continues to build our development files forward, including the establishment of a new bread and breakfast, as well as continuing to update the municipal plan documents. An item of note, there have been two and a half million in new development this year, almost identical to 2019. However, there are 22 building permits issued last year compared to 49 over the same period last year. Under project, Mr. Ackman has been busy overseeing several projects this month, including the Wellness Center, Elizabeth Street End Park, and the repairs at Katie's Cove. We have ordered the furnishings for the physician suite through collaboration with Dr. Pier in At Harland. The Van Horn Trail will be closed at O'Neill Farm Road for hopefully only 68 weeks, as a contractor using the trail to operate dump trucks and excavators to repair the causeway at Katie's Cove. Phase one of the park beside the St. Andrews Inn and Suites is about complete and ready for public use towards the end of the month. With the end of the year approaching, staff's focus will be changing from daily operations to future planning and policy updates over the winter. We are eager to hear of any new initiatives that citizens may have and encourage anyone to come in and share them with us. Respectfully submitted, Chris Spear, Chief Administrative Officer.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Spear? Council Gru?
Just a quick one. Thank you very much for your report, Mr. Spear. Just walking around town and looking, I don't know if it's an element of climate change, but I noticed there's still a lot of leaves on the trees. And I was just wondering if perhaps the leaf collection program could be extended because of that.
Actually, we're staff at this point in time, and so we're probably not going to continue it on. But like he says, we'll be notifying our people to pick the garbage up on Thursdays. And we can talk, I can reconfirm with staff, but I had asked the same question for the same reason, that you drive outside of St. Andrews and not a leaf left to most of the trees, but even the front of the town or the arena here, three of the four trees have about three quarters of the leaves still left on them. So they seem to hold on until December. But right now, that is not the plan, but it has been discussed.
All right, counsel, I will now look for a motion to approve all of the staff reports. All of those reports were contained in your package. You've had an opportunity to review them. I'd like to have a motion to approve that. Deputy Mayor, thank you. And the secondor for that motion. Council Bishop. All in favor of approving the staff reports, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Those reports are all approved. We did have a budget report. I don't think there's any need to discuss it, other than you may have noted from the summary, counsel, I should have referred to this before, but our surplus has actually grown over the last month, which I know we'll eventually end up spending that before the end of the calendar here, or at least some of it. But anyway, it's good news. We are in remarkably good shape considering having gone through COVID. Now we will move to the introduction, consideration, and passing of bylaws and motions. We will move to finance and administration. Counselor Bishop.
Dated October 29th, 2020, and the subject is the approval of the 2021 budget. The background: council and staff began the budget discussions in September, and after several meetings, is ready to approve the 2021 operational and capital budgets, as well as projections for 2022 through 2025. Council and staff based this budget on COVID-19 projections, asset management practices, external grant funding, and the priorities of council. With the changes to the Assessment Act process by the province of New Brunswick, municipalities must complete and submit their budgets by the end of November. The motion. Motion one: that council approves the 2021 general operating and general capital budgets for the town of St. Andrews, as well as the projections for the same for 2022 to 2025 be approved, and that the 2021 general operating fund budget totals $5,157,864, including a tax warrant of $4,189,356, based on a mill rate of 1.2600 for each $100 of assessment. Council orders and directs the levying by the Minister of Local Government and Local Governance Reform of said amount on real property liable to taxation under the Assessment Act within the town of St. Andrews. That the general capital projects in the 2021 budget be funded by $799,093 from the general operating fund, $140,000 from long-term borrowings, $2,832,662 from government grants, and $250,765 from general capital reserve fund.
Can I have a secondor for that motion? Please, Council Gru, thank you. Discussion, council. Sorry, Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to thank staff for the hard work to get us to this point. This is the earliest, at least to my council, that we've ever approved this budget, even close. I think we're always in the wire next year, technically. So the fact that we're able to do that so quickly goes to the hard work of all of the staff, especially you, Mr. Spear. I just wanted to just highlight the fact that this is freezing the mill rate. And I think that that was a conscious effort made by this council and staff with COVID and the challenges that people are having around employment, rising costs, pretty much everything, except for maybe fuel. But the fact that we were able to all work together to find a way to hold the mill rate steady, although we do realize that we have to find a way to increase our tax rate and our revenue, the reality is this was the right year to do what we did. So I just wanted to congratulate all of council as well on coming in at this number.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Council Gru?
I think council has worked hard on this budget, and staff have been extremely supportive. And thank you for that. This is a budget that counselors and the town can truly be proud of. Council has held the line with a 0% tax hike. We're implementing over $4 million in capital projects while reducing our town debt by $82,000. The budget charts the way ahead for the next five years with over $15.5 million in capital projects, with minimal tax increases and only a modest growth in town debt. And as the deputy mayor pointed out, we've done all this within the time constraints put down by the provincial government, which I think is a first for this council. So congratulations, council.
Yeah, I think just from the mayor's point of view, I'm pretty sure I have this right. Last year, it took us 15 meetings to get to this point, and this year it took five. So we're getting better, hey? We're, practice makes perfect, everyone. So, thank you, Council Gru. I appreciate your comments. Anyone else? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. The general budget and operating and general capital are passed.
That council approves the 2021 utility operating fund budget consisting of total revenue of $966,450 and total expenditures of $966,450. That the utility capital projects for 2021 budget be funded by $186,207 from the utility operating fund and $746,393 from long-term borrowing.
Can I look for a secondor for that motion, please? Council Gru, thank you. Comments, council? Council Gru?
Although council has worked hard on this budget and staff has provided outstanding information, I do not feel that council has applied the same level of scrutiny to this budget as they did for the operational budget. The budget is not just a one-year snapshot, but is supposed to chart the course ahead for future councils. The utility budget by law is supposed to be, or is required to be, self-sufficient and is essentially a fee for service to provide the utilities for the town. And this utility budget is not sustainable, it's not on a sustainable path. Examining the numbers, it is apparent that there is insufficient revenue to sustain the utility. In 2021 alone, the town is spending $800,000 more than it's taking in. And over the five-year planning horizon, the utility debt is more than triples in size, to the point where in 2025, it is projected that 43 cents out of every dollar taken in will go to service debt. With all due respect to my council colleagues, I don't feel that this budget is the right path forward for our town, and approving this plan, in my opinion, is wrong. Therefore, regrettably, I must vote against this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Gru. Anyone else have a comment? Deputy Mayor?
Worship, I concur with Council Gru in the fact that the long-term look at this particular budget when you get into utility, it does need seriously revised in the future. However, we have had five years as a council to revise that. We haven't. And we're at the time where we need to pass budgets. And this isn't something that you do, make significant increases in a couple, five meetings. This is something that is a legacy project for our council. So I do respect Council Gru's comments, but I do think that with a municipal plan, a zoning bylaw, and a secondary municipal plan in our last five months, this is one that we are unfortunately going to have to punt to the next council. And I think it's something that they, by going through the first budget process, will identify and have the appropriate amount of time to address. This council has brought a lot of issues forward. We've done some significant mill rates. We've gone to areas that a lot of councils in the past were uncomfortable, but we can't get it all done. We can't do everything. And although, again, I do respect Council Gru's comments because he is right, something drastically will have to change this budget. I can just tell you right now that we should pass this budget and hope that the next council gets in as this is one of their strategic priorities moving forward, so they can give the appropriate time to make the proper decision-making.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anybody else have a comment? If not, I'm ready to call the question. All in favor of approving the budget, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Council Gru, thank you. Budget is passed. All right, move ahead. Okay, Counselor Akaji.
BW201002, date of October 23rd, 2020, snow clearing request by NBCC. And the background is, the town of St. Andrews received a request from Terry Price, Regional Operations Manager at the New Brunswick Community College regarding snow clearing and the noise bylaw. NBCC is requesting the ability to start snow clearing at 5:00 a.m., to be completed by 6:30 a.m.
to be completed for, by 6:30 a.m. daily. NBCC is mandated to have the snow clearing completed by 6:30 a.m. to ensure safe parking and access to students and staff. For NBCC to be able to meet the need, safety needs of the school for daily operations, they are asking to us for an exemption to start at 5:00 a.m. Under our bylaw 06-04, a bylaw concerning the regulations of noise in the town of St. Andrews, Part D, NBCC is already allowed to operate until 11:00 p.m. at night. So the motion is that council provide the New Brunswick Community College with an exemption to bylaw 06-04, a bylaw concerning the regulations of noise in the town of St. Andrews. The exemption will be for snow clearing purposes to start at 5:00 a.m.
Motion, please. Counselor Gomishel, thank you. Council, comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion is approved. Counselor Gru.
Thank you, your worship. The, this is reference number PS200304A. The subject is Provincial Emergency Communications Agreement. The background? Based on the town of St. Andrews submission of the Provincial Emergency Communications Agreement, we have received feedback from the Public Safety Communications Center Operations and Information Systems of the St. John Police Force. The requested motion changes by council have been denied. The following is the fees and payment structure that will be associated with the contract. The fees, fees and payments is, the municipality shall pay to the commission an annual fee calculated in the following manner. One, previous year total tax base for fire service area on a $100 of assessment base multiplied by 0.0064. 9.02, the annual fee in Article 9.01 shall be readjusted for positive tax base growth yearly. Note, the town of St. Andrews council wants to raise the concern that we are being overcharged for this new trunk mobile radio system serviced by two to three times the rate of similar-sized comparable municipalities. The motion is that council moves to amend and sign into agreement the, with the St. Board, St. John Board of Police Commissioners for the new trunk mobile radio system for emergency services with the amendments to paragraph 9.01 to pay 0.0064 per $100 of assessment of fire service base. And paragraph 9.02 shall be readjusted for positive tax base growth yearly.
Thank you, Councilor Gru. Can I have a second or for that motion, please? Yeah. Counselor Bishop, thank you. Discussion, council. Mr. Spear, could you comment? You did give us a bit of background on this.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to follow up. So from discussions at the committee meeting, I was asked to follow up with the St. Stephen about how long they can go. And I got an email earlier today from their fire chief saying that they were in discussions with the Brunswick 9/11, 911 system. And they're saying that, to them, that they can still defer the arrangement for a year and that the equipment that we're promised should still come along, even if we do it for a year. So St. Stephen has formally notified us that they can continue the service for all of next year at the same rate that we had for this year. I haven't a chance to discuss it with the fire chief, so it may be worth tabling it at this meeting. I'll discuss with staff the implications and then follow up with a more formal report back to council.
Yes? Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. All in favor of tabling the motion for further work to be done by our staff? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed to tabling it? None, we will table it. Counselor Gru, you had a comment?
Thank you, I just wanted to add some additional comments. This arrangement is grossly unfair to the town of St. Andrews in that we are being charged two to three times more for the same service as other similar-sized communities. And, and the reason for that is that the province is elected to charge based on assessed value. So it would be akin to going to, I don't know, Best Buy. And if you have a platinum credit card, you're charged one rate. And if you have a regular card, you're charged a lower rate. And I don't think that's fair to the town of St. Andrews.
Thank you, Councilor Gru, this will give us a little more time. Thank you, Mr. Spear. It's reassuring to know that St. Stephen's there for us until we finish our, our discussions with the provincial government and the Board of Police Commissioners about the rates. Thank you, council. All right. Who's next on the list here? Okay, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
The reference number is BTHC200901D. The subject is the third and final reading of Bylaw 20-07, a bylaw of the town of St. Andrews to impose a special business area improvement levy for 2021 in the town of St. Andrews. As part of the downtown beautification initiatives, the St. Andrews Business Improvement Area collects an annual levy from its members to pay for various projects and events. The BIA established in 1984 are all business addresses on Water Street from Princess Royal to Elizabeth Street. As per the Business Improvement Act area of New Brunswick, council must set the levy annually by bylaw, which also includes approval of their budget. The background, update as of October 6th, 2020. The first reading was October 5th, 2020. The second reading was October 26th, 2020. And earlier this evening, we had the hearing of objections to Bylaw 20-07, which there was no objections presented. The motion reads that move that council grant leave for third and final reading of Bylaw 20-07, a bylaw of the town of St. Andrews to impose a special business area improvement levy for 2021 in the town of St. Andrews.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Could I have a second or for that motion, please? Counselor Gru, thank you. Any comments, council? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? I will now then read this bylaw for the third time. And it is fairly short, I'll read it quickly. This is the town of St. Andrews Bylaw Number 20-07, a bylaw of the town of St. Andrews to impose a special business improvement levy. Pursuant to Section 5.1 of the Business Improvement Areas Act, Revised Statutes of New Brunswick, 2014, Chapter 102, be it enacted by the council of the town of St. Andrews as follows. One, that a special business improvement tax shall be levied for the calendar year 2021 on all non-residential property within the business improvement area of the town, said area having been designated in the town of St. Andrews Bylaw Number 72, enacted on June the 4th, 1984. And two, that the special business improvement tax for calendar year 2021 shall be at the rate of 20 cents on each $100 of assessment of real property, being the non-residential property in the business improvement area. Read for the third and final time, the second day of November, 2020. And I will turn to the Schedule A, which is significant. This is the budget for the BIA. This is Schedule A, St. Andrews Business Improvement Corporation, Inc., 2021 budget. Revenue and the BIA levy is $21,486.60. The expenditures under marketing and promotion, general, $2,500. Downtown music and events, $4,700. Special events, spring, $1,229.35. Summer, $1,857.35. Winter, $1,429.35. Annual general meeting, $300. Administration downtown membership dues, $275. Supplies, $241.60. Beautification, general, $7,524.60. For a total 2021 budget of $21,486.60. Whew. Thank you, council. By the way, just to comment, Mr. Spear, we don't know who all is going to be at this table in the next council, but please tell them to get rid of this nonsense of going three readings to get the same thing over and over again, five years in a row. So there's got to be a better way of approving this. Thank you. All right. Who's next? Thank you.
Recreation and Community Services Committee, alleged reference number RCS201002, and the subject is Heather Curling Club Lease. The background reads, with the continued challenge of the pandemic, the Heather Curling Club has asked for a reduction in their lease in exchange for allowing more flexibility regarding the release of the bar license for limited special events, as well as shared use of the ballroom over the winter. Due to the unusual circumstances, staff recommends both parties enter into a one-year agreement until the long-term outcome of COVID is determined. And the motion reads, council moves that the town of St. Andrews and the Heather Curling Club enter into a one-year lease for, for a fee of $15,079.56 plus HST under the terms and conditions of the attached draft lease.
Thank you, Counselor Gomishel. Could I have a second or for that motion, please? Deputy Mayor Henderson, thank you. Comments, council? Yes?
Has this lease been reviewed by the Curling Club? Are they in agreement with it?
I guess I had to get your approval of it first before I could give it to them. But we've talked about all the terms formally with them, so there won't be any surprises to them.
The only thing that's, that's struck me a bit in paragraph 11, and maybe it's obvious and I'm being nitpicky, but at the end of that sentence, I'd put where it is the host. Because we kind of say that the town would have a right of first refusal and receive all bar profits. But I assume we only receive the bar profits where we take up, where we are the host.
That would be correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. Again, I, I had some questions, I guess with regards to paragraph 11. And I defer to the deputy mayor because I think he had some comments on the, the, I guess, the technical side of, of having the liquor license with the Curling Club and how that works. And I thought that we had agreed we were going to change the language a little bit. I'm not sure if, if we have the correct language there right now.
Through your worship, I'm not sure, as I didn't propose any language changes. I, I know it was brought up at the table, but I wasn't the one bringing any out. I, I think the spirit of it through your worship was, this council did speak of trying to make this arena more vibrant and bring back more large-scale events. And sometimes in order to bring a large-scale event in, bar profits do enter into the equation. And when you always defer those to an outside organization, it's potential that that could be a breakpoint for some, for some potentially large events. If you think of things that we used to do here in the past, like the aquaculture fair and things like that. The reality is, is definitely under COVID, I can't see that being, probably coming into play at all. But it's something that just gives us the flexibility. 99% of the time, the Curling Club does a fantastic job. It's a major fundraiser for them, their bar profits. So I don't think it's something that we're actively looking to take away. It's just something that if there is the right opportunity, it gives us some flexibility to, to bring in some extra revenue.
So in other words, it's a give and take. We've, we've allowed roughly a 25% decrease in their rental because of COVID and because of the lack of their ability to do some of the things they would normally do under their lease with their own members during the, the curling year, I, I think.
50% reduction, your worship.
Is it? Okay. Well, then I think we're, we're not asking for that much in return, are we? Which we may or may not exercise, but at least it gives us the option.
It gives us the option.
Alrighty, good. I get it. I get it.
So, so if the wording could reflect the spirit of that, I'm, I think we're all fine with that.
I'm going to call the question. All in favor, unless someone else has a comment, sorry.
Yeah, I just, actually, I will add on that, your worship is, I just wanted to acknowledge the town of St. Andrews, not just council, the town of St. Andrews is, the Curling Club in St. Stephen unfortunately is an opening this year. And if it wasn't for the taxpayer of St. Andrews and town council and town staff adjusting this, the reality is, is curling would not be happening in St. Andrews. So this is something that the town has actively partnered in and been a major sponsor of the Heather Curling Club. Not just this year we do approve this, but also last year. If we wouldn't have forgave them on the lease last year, they would have been in such a hole that they couldn't have even opened this year. So I think it needs to be recognized by council's commitment to the Heather Curling Club and to age-friendly, because there's, there's a lot of young kids. I know Mr. Gomishel's taking them out, Mr. G. Curling. But also I know that there's a very vibrant social network of seniors that curl in our community too. So just kudos to the town, the town of St. Andrews and the taxpayers for, for getting them through these tough times. And the only other thing I'll say is I believe they have 50% off for new members. I think that that's been a long-term offer for the Heather Curling Club. And there's always an opportunity for those people that are in St. Stephen that really want to curl, to come down and join the Heather Curling Club at 50% off potentially. I don't want to put a special out there I'm not 100% sure of. But there's, there's a good opportunity where they can actually use this to maybe put some money in the bank for future years where, where tough times happen. And just once again, thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm calling the question now. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion is approved. Okay. Okay. Counselor Harrison.
The 201001, and it's a request for building a bird lookout at the St. Andrews Waste Treatment Plant in Lagoon. The town of St. Andrews has received a request from the St. Andrews Outdoor Recreation and Trails Committee to build an accessible platform lookout at the waste treatment plant. The purpose of this platform is to be used as an educational tool to observe the variety of species of birds that inhabit the area. And there's a staff report attached with further details, including a nice big list of birds that have been observed there. Now, the motion is that council approve the installation of the accessible platform for bird watching off of the Van Horn Trail at the St. Andrews Waste Treatment Plant under the terms and conditions established by the CAO. Oh, no, I'm done. Do we want a platform to look at birds over the sewage lagoon? That's the short version.
Thank you, Counselor Gomishel. Questions, council? Deputy Mayor.
Dr. Johnson, I went down to look at it. When he originally told me this plan, I think I was like all of us, being like, you want to look out at the sewage lagoon? But I did go down there with him just recently. And it's not the ideal time to view birds, but there was ducks, birds galore. It actually would shock you at how many different varieties of birds go in there. And I will say this, that it's also, although it takes me back a little bit, it's also an opportunity to educate the public on how good of our waste treatment plan is. We actually put a lot of money into that, and they put a lot of money into it. So it's something to be proud of. So this is a really unusual request. When you go down and look at it, it actually makes sense.
And we should really post this list of birds.
Because it's, it's longer than I would have thought for the area. There's one called the lesser yellowlegs. I mean, I don't even know what that is, but I want to see it now. Short yellowlegs.
Although I'm not technically allowed to ask questions at this point of the juncture, I only have one question, it's a burning one. Am I going to be allowed to fish off of the platform? Because we've been, it's been reported to us that we have any number of fish surviving and flourishing in our sewage lagoon. So we must have a very good, high-quality sewage lagoon.
How do they get in this?
I have no idea, but. But I'm all about catching them, that's what. And drop them down?
Eat them, and then they escape.
Anyway, sorry, counsel, I digress. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Thank you, counsel.
I have a few, and they just get longer. PED 201003A and B, and these are appointments of building inspectors for the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission. So the background is, the lawyer for the SWNBSC identified that building inspectors for the town of St. Andrews need appointments by council. To ensure that building inspectors are legal to work for the commission and the municipality, they must be appointed. Council needs to appoint the commission building inspectors directly by name. In any case, SNBSC still indemnifies the town via our service agreement should our building inspectors make an error in carrying out their duties in the town, for instance. And the, I think this is the mo, the motion is, or I'll just read the action here. First point, whereas the town of St. Andrews has contracted with the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission to obtain professional building inspection services, be it resolved that Keith Vernon Faulkner is a building inspector for the town of St. Andrews, be it further resolved that Keith Vernon Faulkner shall remain a building inspector for the town of St. Andrews so long as he remains an employee of the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, be it further resolved that Keith Vernon Faulkner shall remain a building inspector for the town of St. Andrews so long as the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission remains contracted to provide building inspection services to the town of St. Andrews.
Seconder for that motion, please. Everybody want? Counsel Akagi, thank you. Discussion, counsel? Okay, I'll call the question then. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion is passed.
And then part B, whereas the town of St. Andrews has contracted with the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission to obtain professional building inspection services, be it resolved that Michael Joseph Kyle Hall is a building inspector for the town of St. Andrews, be it further resolved that Michael Joseph Kyle Hall shall remain a building inspector for the town of St. Andrews so long as he remains an employee of the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, be it further resolved that Michael Joseph Kyle Hall shall remain a building inspector for the town of St. Andrews so long as the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission remains contracted to provide building inspection services to the town of St. Andrews.
Seconder for that motion, please. Counsel Bishop, thank you. Questions? I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion is presented, is passed.
And I will take...
Deputy Mayor, could you take over from Counsel Harrison for this motion, please?
I certainly can, your worship. The reference number is PED 201004. The subject is one-year temporary use request for 182 Water Street. The background is, council was participant to the presentation from Charlie Bartlett on 182 Water Street and the request for a temporary use for the 2021 at the special meeting of council on October 26. Mr. Bartlett presented a market food venue concept for temporary use for 2021 with development of a new building starting in 2022. Prior to the council deliberation, direction was given to staff to review town bylaws to ensure compliance. Provided is a staff report highlighting the review of town bylaws. The motion reads that council moves to support the proposed one-year temporary use request for an open-air market restaurant at 182 Water Street to Charlie Bartlett with terms and conditions outlined by the CAO.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Can I have a secondary for that motion, please? Counsel Goumi Shaw, thank you. Counsel, comments? Counsel Gru.
I think at the committee meeting, there was a question posed as to whether the BIA and the chamber were in support of this. I don't know if we've reached out to the chamber and BIA to determine if there is support for this initiative.
No, I'm afraid we have not at this point in time, but we certainly will.
That was raised at the meeting. Yeah, okay. Okay.
I would suggest, given that we haven't reached out to the BIA and the chamber yet, and this has, this could have an impact on other restaurants, we, I don't see, I don't know if it would cause any problems if we tabled this to December so that we could reach out to them and see if there is any issues or any problems with this initiative.
Deputy Mayor, do you have a comment?
I concur with Counsel Gru. I guess the proposal, first of all, was a pretty interesting one, to say the least. Normally, when we get presented with food trucks or trailers, I think in the past, our standard has been to say no, but I guess to Counsel Gru's point, in this, in this case, it looks a little bit different in the fact that, you know, they're going to establish some private land, they're going to have their own seating set up, and it is temporary, it's not a long-term solution for our community. So I think Counsel Gru's request that the BIA and chamber both review this, it should be done, simply for the fact that there's a lot of restaurants that try to stay open year-round, and those are the critical months where they need to make revenue to justify staying open year-round, and if we started allowing a number of food trucks and trailers to come in, park, get revenue and leave, and not pay taxes essentially, it's a tough go and tough for understanding. The other thing that I'll add is, it would be good to get a few more clarifying questions from Mr. Bartlett. He sent in some diagrams on what it could look like. The one thing that we certainly learned during the pilot project and from new developments is anything you do downtown is highly scrutinized, so I'd like to see that this isn't just a plan, this is, if we do approve it, this is exactly what it would look like versus this is what it could look like. And the only other thing I would say is, it'd be very interesting to know what type of food would come from that trailer. You know, you've got some businesses in town. I'll give an example of a pizza place. Well, if you're a pizza place that, again, is trying to be open year-round, and someone comes in the summer and serves the same type of food, it really takes away at your core. So it'd be good to see that this offering provides some type of new variety or new choice to the town of St. Andrews, where it helps expand the overall footprint of dining in St. Andrews if council was to approve it. So I know that was a long-winded answer, but I agree with Counsel Gru, and I definitely want to hear more, because I do think it is a more sophisticated proposal than the ones we've got in the past.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Look, Mr. Spear, I just have a clarifying question. This is an unusual presentation. I don't remember anything quite like this coming before us before, but I also do remember that every time a restaurant wants to send up business, we don't ask the Chamber of Commerce to say yea or nay for any new businesses moving into town. So I see this as a temporary for a permanent business, and we wouldn't do it that way. And obviously, when it goes through various processes of planning, there are, there are steps at which people can register their objections, including the chamber. So I have no objection if we want to do this, counsel, but it's, it is not what we normally do, and we've had new restaurants open up over the past year or so, and we didn't, we didn't approach it this way. So if we're doing it differently, it's...
We're changing the bylaws for this place. The other ones that have come, the new restaurants, have been following the bylaws and the rules and regulations of the town of Sanders, but they're asking to change the rules, and if we're going to change the rules, we want to make sure we understand the impacts of the business community.
Counsel Akagi, sorry, I didn't mean to...
Our solicitor, Richard McPhee, gave us a note that says that the license cannot be granted if the proposal, due to the fact that Section 3.30 of the zoning bylaw states as follows, "The sale of food, beverages, or goods from any vehicle, portable structure, or temporary structure shall not be permitted on any private lot and may only be permitted on public property, subject to a vendor's license or permit issued by the town." Can you explain to me what?
Sure. So within the zoning bylaw, that's for sure, temporary facilities not, like, that's not typically allowed, but under the Community Planning Act legislation, the PRAC can provide an overriding order for a temporary permit for one year on that, that will allow them to set that up, that contravenes our bylaw, but the PRAC is asking council's opinion on it, kind of the opposite of what usually happens, we ask their opinion on stuff, while they're asking our opinion on it before we go. And just one other item that was on the same note is, currently under, I think it's bylaw 75 regarding our temper... Yeah. Peddlers permits, sorry, peddlers permits, is that this actually wouldn't be allowed, so if council wanted to proceed with that, you'd actually have to make an amendment to that as well, which can be done, but that in order to ensure that everyone's in compliance. So the PRAC can only override the zoning bylaw, they can't override our peddlers permit bylaw.
Okay, Counsel Gru.
You just raised a flag. Does this mean we have to go through three readings to amend that bylaw?
Potentially, but he wouldn't be looking to set up business until the thing. So if council supported it, we'd have lots of time to do it, but yes, in the short term, yes, you'd have to amend the bylaw between now and the spring.
We go down that path and have three hearings or readings and all that sort of stuff, I think we should make sure that the BIA and the chamber are on board.
So in order to change this for a temporary use, we would now be opening it wide open for everybody to go in and start doing this, but, or can we just grant a grandfather? Yeah, okay, I got you.
So there's two different things, though, deputy mayor. This is unusual, because the person's setting up on their own property, and so, under normal food trucks, they'd ask to set up, say, along our streets and stuff, which won't change that fact. So what makes this a little bit unusual is the fact that they're going on our own property, but council still has the ability to say, no, they don't want to take that chance, because regardless of what it means legally, you'll still get all those applicants that have come to us in the past about food trucks, to say, why are you guys allowing a food truck in the town of St. Andrews? That is going to happen, but it's a bit of a different situation, but it'll perceive the same, for sure.
Getting a sense that we should be tabling this matter and getting further clarification from our staff and our, and our legal counsel, as required Counsel Akagi has raised that. So I'll look for a motion to table. Yeah, yeah, certainly. Sorry, Counsel Goumi Shaw.
I think I communicated to everyone that I was in favor of this proposal from Mr. Bartlett. It's only a one-year, a one-year temporary. If it's not working out, we could, we could pull the plug on it. Another concern for me is that this is coming forward as a request from PRAC for our opinion. They didn't have to ask us for our opinion, they could have just gone ahead and approved or, or not allowed this request. I think over the last few years, we've had a number of changes in planning, and there's a few things that have come up recently that are, that are concerning to me. In the downtown court, things are, things are being decided from the Regional Service Commission, and I think we've kind of lost control of some of our planning, and I think we need to revisit some of, some of those things. A number of surprises seem to be coming along that, that, you know, you're on town council, you should know that, as well, you're right, I should know that, and I didn't, and for that, I apologize. I do think we need to either get better communication with the PRAC or have a better look at how we're making some of those decisions. Thank you, worship.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Goumi Shaw. So I take it that a one-month delay to get more information would be appropriate. So someone want to make a, deputy mayor, second it? Okay, all in favor of tabling this matter, and we'll likely hear, this will come back around at the committee meeting, I would assume, this month, so. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We'll table this. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Good discussion. Okay. Are we at the end of the line, just about, eh? Counsel Akagi? I think it's you.
I think it's me. I'm just trying to find my page. Okay. Wrong page, sorry. PW 201004. Climate Change Resilience Assessment. Background. Our application for 3.6 million in funding for the Wharf refurbishment is under the Green Infrastructure Adaptation, Resilience, and Disaster Mitigation Program. As part of the application, we must have a third party prepare a climate change resilience assessment for submission with the application. Staff have received an early quote as of the October 28th for $10,000 to complete this document. As this would cause our consultant's fee line item to be over budget, we are asking council, or I am asking council, to authorize the up to $10,000 for the completion of this report this calendar year. So the motion is, move that staff be authorized to spend up to $10,000 for the completion of the Climate Change Resilience Assessment to continue our application under the Green Infrastructure Adaptation, Resilience, and Disaster Mitigation Program for the Market Wharf.
Have a secondary for that motion, please? Yeah, thank you, Counsel Goumi Shaw. Counsel? Comments? Mr. Spear, do you want to comment further on that?
Sure. Counsel, I apologize, this wasn't brought up to the committee meeting a couple, or last week, but it just kind of came in between the two meetings, and unfortunately, they put a deadline on it to about the length of time it takes to do it. So we added it under new business for consideration, but it's, again, as part of this program, it's a look at greenhouse gas emissions and a whole bunch of other things. I provided a small section of, from the document that they had provided me. It has to be done by someone that has a professional background, engineering planner, et cetera, and we're getting multiple quotes or quotes from multiple vendors on it, but it's really necessary if we want to be able to participate in that program, and they put a time limit on me to have this by close to the end of the year.
One other question, Mr. Spear. I assume that should council wish to go ahead with this, tonight, you can find $10,000 from the savings in our budget this year to pay for...
The actual savings won't be a problem, worship, it's just in the line item itself.
Counsel, any, any comments? Counsel Gru?
Just a question to Mr. Spear, is, when you do this climate change assessment, what design are, is the consultant going to be looking at? Is he looking at the jetty-type design? Is he looking at a pier-type design? Because I think that would make a difference in the assessment.
Breakwater design, because that was kind of what's on the table right now, but we'll have to confirm if that's going to have a big difference in the two, because if the funding has told us we can manage that a little bit, what we do on the materials we use. And just to follow up that counselor, in discussions with engineering firm that sort of spearheaded that part of it for us, they said they'd have some more reports ready for us the next three weeks, so by the next committee meeting, we should have something in front of us to discuss the various models and how council wants to proceed.
I think that that's a big question that has to be resolved before we hire this consultant, is if the design that we choose has an impact, then on this particular study, then we have to resolve that, I think, upfront. Because I know there's been concerns expressed about the design, and so maybe that's a question you can ask them, is, will the, I guess, the design of the Wharf impact on their study? Thank you.
I guess move to table this motion until we have more information on the design.
Because this is one of those checkboxes that we have to fill in in order to get the money.
But I mean, unless we can tell them what... But I mean, unless we can tell them what design, and I know I'm, I really don't want to get locked in, if we start doing things to one design, then we kind of get, we kind of scope down and we're there. So.
Well, that's why I'm asking Mr. Spear to check that first, but we can still approve to go ahead with the study, but, you know, we're still not locked into a design, I don't think.
I, like, I don't know, like, if we do the study to a design, how, I think we'd end up somewhat locked into that design.
Is that if it locks us in with a certain design and not to proceed. However, if it's just a generic study of impacts that we have to have as a check the box, then we can proceed. But council wants to have the ability to revisit the design, but not pay for this twice, is what Counsel Goo is essentially saying, which, which ties in with both your comments.
At times, I'm not exactly what that conversation was down there, so, right.
A lot of nets being hit back there right now.
Counsel at the arena, you do interpretation, you tell the story from the next person.
Counsel Goo, I wish a point shot's going on back there.
Okay, so, so I get it, I get it. If anyone else has a comment, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? And Mr. Spear knows what to do next. So we're all set now. Okay, now, we, I think that's it. We move back to the. Move back to, I think we're at question period. And. Mr. Knopper, do we have any questions?
From the public, based on tonight's agenda, one of the questions was, has there been any consideration for rehabilitation gym on-site at the perceived Pasmacwati Lodge facility? I don't think that's been in discussion yet, so we can, I don't think council can answer that. Second question actually relates more to C A O Spears's report and its questioning on Wednesday night's meeting, is the short-term rental bylaw going to be discussed? And at this point, council will be discussing the zoning bylaw, which has portions of short-term rental discussion, but at this point, no other draft short-term rental bylaws being presented to council at that meeting. And the third question that was proposed, and this is back to C A O Spears's report, was what was the number of building permits from last year compared to this year? The answer was forty-nine in twenty nineteen, and in twenty twenty, there were twenty-two. Those were all the questions provided.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Knopper. Now we can move to counselors and deputy mayor's comments. Counsel? Who wants to go? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo a comment made in, in Mr. Spears's report is just wishing Mr. Sharkey a happy retirement. Mr. Sharkey has been here since I was, well, as long as I've been coming here, and I know that he did go to Harbor Station for a number of years, but to have someone that had that ice experience right here in this community, I don't know, I know Mr. McFarland's very talented, but to have Mr. Sharkey that many years with his knowledge, it's not something that most small communities have. So on behalf of all of council with you, I'd like to wish him a happy retirement, hoping when the timing's right, we can get together and see him and have a proper, proper send-off as a group. And then just the other thing is, just because of COVID again, this November eleventh, obviously as a community, we usually gather at the Anglican Church and, and remember our fallen and all those that have made sacrifices for all that we have and, and remembering. And I just wanted to draw attention to on November eleventh at eleven A M., there will be on C H G O T V, a televised wreath-laying ceremony for everyone at home to still remember the fallen, because I know it's important to, to all of us.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else have a comment?
I've, I've just got a couple of quick ones. One of them is a follow-up, a little bit on what you may have noted downtown, that today we have banners that have been wrapped around some of our light posts. Those banners were created by Brenda Waywood and a, and a band of hardy sewers and knitters, and they created this in honor of Remembrance Day, and they have an aspiration that they will continue doing this, and that eventually we'll have enough to wrap every light post downtown on Remembrance Day. So, so take a note of that. I think it's a wonderful initiative. They've been working on this for over a year as a group, and I think that's, so we thank you very much to our public work staff and to Mr. Spear for getting that all organized. Mr. Knopper was involved in this as well, meeting with Mrs. Waywood and getting her, her stuff together for that. So I think in a, in a time when COVID's, as the deputy mayor has mentioned, COVID's caused us to do things differently, but this is something that's symbolic that we can do, and it's, it's amazing. I thought about it today in the driving rain and wind, and I said, how appropriate. That's probably just exactly what it was like in the trenches in World War One, right? In terms of the, the kind of weather that we had today. So the, the poppies looked like they were fluttering, so it was, it was good stuff. One other quick thing I wanted to mention, we did get some information about, from the community garden and the, the very great year they had this year in, in doing everything in the community garden. I just wanted to acknowledge all of the volunteers in the community garden and what they've done for our community. It's, it's an outstanding piece of work that's, it's become intergenerational because it involves the youth at the youth center, as well as many longtime gardeners, and they, they manage to have security at their garden to keep the deer out. So they get, they get kudos for that as well. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Counsel. Appreciate very much. I'll look, we were going to have a closed session, but it's not going to be necessary, I'm advised by staff. So we won't go there, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Okay, and thank you, Counsel. We're adjourned.